The Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being broadcast live at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street, Redding, Mass. Live broadcasts are available only in Redding due to technology constraints. This meeting was videotaped for distribution to the community TV stations in North Redding, Wilmington and Lynnfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items on the official agenda as well as on items not on the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board or responding to comments. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order in all public comment or ensuing discussion. I'd like to acknowledge, so Tom, you'll be the Board Secretary.
Yes, sir.
We have Mark Doxer here from the FinCom and we have Frank Byron and Karen Snow. And with that, we will, John Stempak is not in attendance at this meeting and Bob Soli, of course, has resigned and is, we thank him again for his service and is not here tonight. So, we're going to start with the presentation of the fiscal year 2014 audit from Melanson Heath.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot. My name is Karen Snow and I am the Audit Manager for Redding Municipal Light Department's Fiscal Year 2014 Audit. And I'm just going to go over the financial statements very briefly, but if you have any questions, feel free to stop me and interrupt and ask. I'm just going to start on page one of the financial statements, which is the Independent Auditor's Report. And this is essentially what we are hired to do, is give an opinion on whether RMLD's financial statements are fairly stated and materially correct in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And as in years past, this year's audit is an unqualified opinion, so it's a clean opinion. In our opinion, you actually can see the opinion on page two, your financial statements are materially correct in, fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The Management's Discussion and Analysis, which is in a narrative overview of the financial statements, is on pages three to five. And if you don't really want to look at just numbers, it's a good place for you to just get a quick overview of the results of operations and highlights of what happened in fiscal year 2014. But I'm going to skip right past that and go to page six, which is your Statements of Net Position for your balance sheet. And it is the Assets and Liabilities and Net Position of RMLD at June 30th, 2014. This is a comparative statement, so you see two years. You see both this year, 2014, and last year, 2013. And I'm just going to highlight very briefly, your total assets went up 4%. Most of that increase was in your restricted cash and short-term investments, which went up about $1.2 million. The biggest increase was in your depreciation fund, which went up about $1.4 million, and your deferred fuel reserve, which went up about $1.5 million. And there is more information on that on Note Three on page 17 of the financial statements. Liabilities, you'll notice that there's a fairly large liability for "due to" the pension trust, and that's offset on page nine. And that's just the fiscal year 2014 contribution from RMLD to its pension trust. And the money was not paid out before June 30th, so it's just a "due to" and a "due from" between those two funds. Here is, what you won't see on here is an OPEB liability, because in fiscal year 2014, RMLD contributed a little over $300,000 to the OPEB trust, and that is on pages nine and 10. So they fully funded their contribution for fiscal year 2014, so there is no liability for the OPEB trust on these financial statements. In fiscal year 2015, you will be required to recognize, per Gatsby 67 and Gatsby 68, RMLD's portion of the town's retirement system, the town's pension, you'll be able, you will be required to recognize your portion of that unfunded liability. And that at June 30th is about $7.8 million. There is some supplementary information on page 29 that is a very quick overview of what the unfunded liability is now versus, there's four comparative years there, and it also talks about your OPEB. But those are two pretty large liabilities. Your unfunded OPEB liability is about $6 million at June 30th in fiscal year 2018. That is also going to be recognized on these financial statements, so within the next couple of fiscal years, you're going to be required to recognize some fairly significant liabilities on the Statements of Net Position. And if there's no questions, I'll just move on to page seven, which is your Statement of Revenues, Expenses and Changes in Net Position, which is your income statement for the year. You had a minor decrease in your sales. Your kilowatt hour sales were down about 2% for the year. Your operating revenues, your sales, were down about 1% for the year. You had some temporary over-collections for your fuel charge adjustment and your purchase power adjustment. Those just represent temporary fluctuations where you're adjusting those numbers. Some years, those will be positive, some years, those will be negative, depending on timing issues of when you're collecting that money and what you're charging and what your fuel expenses and your capacity and transmission expenses are. So overall, your operating revenues were up about 3% for the year. Your operating expenses remained relatively stable, only up about $248,000, so relatively stable on the operating expense side. Your biggest increase in operating expenses was for pensions and benefits, which was up about $658,000. And then your non-operating revenues and expenses, the largest piece of that is your return on investment to the Town of Redding, which was $2.3 million in fiscal year 2014. There is an agreement where that is indexed to inflation and the Consumer Price Index, so that's up about 2% from the prior year. Overall, your change in net position was a positive $3.5 million, which is about 6% return. You are capped at 8%, so you're right there in the middle and you had a nice, healthy net income for the year. Any questions on that financial statement? The only other statements I just want to go over very briefly are on pages nine and 10. These are your fiduciary funds, which is your pension trust and your OPEB trust. And Redding contributed, the amount that was actuarially determined that they needed to contribute for fiscal 2014, was contributed to both of these funds. It was a little over $1.3 million to the pension trust and just over $343,000 to the OPEB trust. And then you also paid out of your pension trust, $1.3 million, to the Town of Redding for your fiscal year 2014 retirement assessment.
Mr. Chair. George, by the way, I apologize, George, for not acknowledging you at the beginning of the meeting. George Hooper, CAB member. So with that apology, please.
Thank you. Just for the people watching at home, when we say "OPEB," they might not understand what you're saying.
Oh, I'm sorry. Other post-employment benefits, which is health insurance primarily. It has nothing to do with a pension, it's other post-employment benefits. So this is where you provide a portion of the health insurance benefits. RMLD pays a portion of the cost for its retirees, and this recognizes the obligation you have to not only your current retirees, but your future retirees as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That about covers the financial statements, a very quick overview, like I said. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a question. The way that's recognized, you said the current retirees as well, how would the payments that are actually made to, in support of those current retirees not be acknowledged in the liability?
They are not acknowledged in the liability. They're actually expensed in the year that you pay them. They're called "pay-as-you-go." So the liability is, I guess, in essence, recognizing the liability you have for the people who are retired now and what you're going to have to pay them over the next however many years, plus the people who are working for you now and are eventually going to retire and receive those benefits.
Ready for reporting, subcommittee? Yes, we have a report of the subcommittee.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The RMLD Subcommittee met before this meeting, along with the Town of Redding Subcommittee, was a joint meeting between the two Boards, the two groups. It was the recommendation of the, both the Audit Subcommittee of the Board and the Town of Redding Audit Committee, that the Board accept, that the Commission accept the audit as presented. I see Mr. Herrick is here. I know he was not able to get to the meeting, I guess, at 6:30, so.
Sorry, missed that.
Yeah, so, I don't know if you have any specific questions or anything, you know, so. But it was the unanimous vote of both groups to recommend to this Board that we accept the audit. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that the RMLD Board of Commission accept the Town of Redding Municipal, Redding Municipal Light Department annual audit, annual financial statements, which are audited, and that we accept them.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? And the motion carries three to zero.
Just one item. It was mentioned that I did ask if there was a management letter, and that we're detailing any particular control issues, and I was told that there will be no management letter issued. That there's no material weaknesses and no significant deficiencies.
Thank you. And I just would like to add to this, that, you know, Town Meeting met Monday night and voted 68 to 45 to ask FinCom to help us look at our procurement issues. And we want to welcome Mark Doxer, the Chairman of the FinCom here. I don't want to put you on the spot, Mark, but if you would like to, if there's anything we could just say here at the meeting about what you'd like to try to accomplish, or we could take it offline and, or do it at the next meeting?
Just a very quick comment.
Do you want to, just so the public can hear?
Microphone. Put the microphone.
Yeah, why don't you guys get home? No, just kidding.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, no.
Thanks for coming.
Sure. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome to stay, I'm sure.
Yeah.
I think there's money back there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not really specific comments, just that FinCom has created a subcommittee, which will look into what's the best way to approach looking at the Town Boards, the RMLD and the schools. Procurement is obviously the focus area at this point. We'll be meeting next week, and then hopefully we can start to have some discussions from there in terms of what information we'd like to have. Very much appreciate your offer of information that's already been provided or continued.
Sure. I mean, on the specific matter of these surplus trucks that we've been over a number of times, I know that that's already been pulled together and be happy to make sure that gets to you. There's quite a lot of it, photographs and maintenance records and oil changes and so forth. That's all out there to give, if that needs to be revisited. But otherwise, I guess, I don't know, Colleen, you have any questions on just a process? Do we need to discuss that?
Just whatever documents that you need, that, you know, whatever heads up you can give us, if we're going to go for me, or David, or whatever, and to, so that we can accumulate all the documents that you need, get them onto you in an expeditious manner.
Thank you.
Just to be mindful that, you know, we're trying to, you know, the operation as well. So we want to be able to accommodate your requests of all the documents and just looking forward to knowing what the process is so that we can start to help you.
Absolutely. No, I appreciate the support, and our plan is to, again, the reason I'm not saying much tonight is I'd rather have us very focused on how we'll approach it and then we can share that information.
Go ahead, Tommy.
Yeah, so I guess I just echo a little bit, so I think the Board, we certainly support and want to endorse the work. And I would just say my main concern would be, after, fresh off the audit, is wanting to maintain the profitability of the RMLD for the benefit of our ratepayers, but also of the Town of Redding, which is a concern to us. So the speed and timeliness, et cetera, of audits in my own business always reminds me of the need to make sure it's not so invasive as to have a negative impact on productivity, and it's just the nature of audits. So I would, I'm sure that'll be Colleen's concern, but I would just, you know, add that sensitivity, that, you know, the goal is to continue to operate profitably and that both can be accomplished, but if something has to be done, you know, in 24 hours, that's a different aspect than if it's spread over some reasonable period.
Yeah, no, well understood. Town Meeting asked that we report back to them at November Town Meeting. What we anticipate is that that will be a progress report of some sort, certainly not a completion of all our activities. But that said, let us put together a plan, then we'll come back, absolutely.
And let me just say that it's hard, I don't quite know how to address it, but it just seemed like there was ill-feeling in the room at Town Meeting, and I just, I regret that. And it does seem unnecessary, a couple of speakers noted that, you know, when we can all work together, it doesn't have to be like that. You know, to the extent I'm responsible for that, I regret anything I've said that would add to that. And I think also this Board needs to look again at the vote we took last month with regard to, you know, charging somebody for the costs. And I think what I'd like to do is look at that matter that we took up, and if there are costs, you know, I'd like to look at the legal impact of what we did and basically go forward in the spirit of cooperation and perhaps revisit that vote at our next meeting after examining it a little bit more. And I think that, on balance, that the expertise of FinCom is welcome, and whatever time it takes, I would imagine it's going to be worth it, and it will be, there'll be a positive result. So thank you for being here, and Phil, please, yeah.
Since I made that vote, discuss that at some time.
Yeah.
The only thing that I would hope is, and the biggest thing that I took objection with, is the fact there wasn't communication beforehand with this Commission.
Right.
I would hope, you know, there's several members that got up, particularly Mr. Berman, who got up and spoke and said, gee, I hope we all get together and have discussion. And I hope, I hope we follow up, we all follow up that. I think Mr. Berman's, you know, suggested, a former Finance Committee Chairman, was an excellent one, and we all kind of sit together and, you know, talk and to have each other, you know? And, you know, and the other thing is, I would hope that the instructions were to Finance Committee. I hope you don't get influenced by other outside forces. It's a Finance Committee project that, I got that very clear from Town Meeting, it was a Finance Committee.
Absolutely. And we report to Town Meeting.
I hope we don't try to influence you from this Commission, or any other outside force.
Yeah. We report to Town Meeting. And Town Meeting has asked for us to do this, the Charter outlines that there are some expectations on FinCom to do things for Town Meeting. So your point is taken, and Town Meeting is the body that receives it. And I think the way the article went through, you know, clearly the Board will be involved in the activities as well.
And, you know, even though it said investigation, I got the very clear message from Town Meeting that it's procurement process that they wanted you to look at, and not go beyond that.
Well, I think our focus is on the procurement process, and our hope is that pulling everything together, we identify what issues there are, if any, and deal with those. And, you know, at the end of the day, where things lead us is where we need to follow. And again, to Town Meeting, for Town Meeting.
I just have one last suggestion. As a former Finance Committee Chairman, in the dark ages, I always made it a point, anytime that anything was discussed that affected a committee, that that committee received an invitation. We're of advice.
Right, I mean, so that, I think that was the prelude to any feel, was this, why wouldn't we be at your meeting when you're voting on the article, and why wouldn't either selectmen come here or invite us there? But it's all water under the bridge now, so.
So just another comment, Mark. So I think, sort of anticipating with November, and since a number of us all here at Town Meeting as well, I don't have the answer, because I'm not quite sure of how it's supposed to work, being relatively new to the Board, but I think if we could have a part of the process include, and certainly Colleen will be included because she's the General Manager, but if there's a way to make sure there's dialogue with the Board of Commissioners, so we, when we go into Town Meeting, we can all reinforce the work as opposed to, you know, see something for the first time. So it's not about doing anything ahead of time, but it's more just be part of the process so we can be supportive of both the Town Meeting and beyond. So I guess it speaks to the point that you made, Dave and Phil, just around, you know, the collaboration piece. So if you have a status report, there's things that are outside the purview of communicating with it, at least we kind of know generally what's, you know, progress, what's going on. Maybe there's obstacles with getting information and we could be helpful, or I think it would just be useful as a Commissioner, I know I'd feel better knowing I'm part of the process as opposed to getting an update real time with, as a Town Meeting.
Yeah, I think as the article was written, I think we can accommodate, we're reporting to Town Meeting and the appropriate Boards, so I think we can largely accommodate that. Again, I anticipate a progress report at November, not a final report.
Anything else? No. Thank you very much, Mr. Doxer, for coming tonight. We appreciate it. So we're going to, our next item is forming a General Manager Review Committee?
Yes, yes. Who are you appointing?
Well, I think we need three people on the Review Committee. So how about?
Senior member, I'd be more than happy to serve.
Okay, and so would I. And, I mean, John's not here, and it's just the four of us, but we.
We'll volunteer him anyway.
We could, I mean, you want to have it be Phil?
Actually, it probably should be John.
Okay.
It should be John. I think John would be an excellent, excellent person.
Yeah, okay. Just because we're the three.
Well, John also led the Search Committee, too, so I think that's, that would be an appropriate.
Okay, so then we need a motion, right, to do this, to form the committee with those three?
I'll move that the Commission appoint a subcommittee made up of Mr. Talbot, Mr. Pacino and Mr. Stempak for the purpose of the General Manager Review.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All in favor? The motion carries three to zero.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Have we not had a Review Committee, or how long has it been?
Well, Colleen's been on the job since July of 2013, and we've not.
Well aware of that, I see.
Yeah.
But I was just, we didn't have one in place at the time?
We have not had one in place during this current fiscal year.
Okay.
So we now do.
Okay, thank you. So update on the Ad-Hoc Charter Review Committee?
Yeah, just quickly, Mr. Chairman, the Board's, the Commission's recommendation was presented to the Ad-Hoc Committee a week ago Monday. It basically, at this point, has been referred to the Town, to the Town Council at this point. So Redding Town, originally this was supposed to be, the Ruben Rudman opinion that we had was supposed to be sent over to the Town Council, but apparently it knocked in. And so he attended the meeting that night, and so it has been presented, and he's going to get back sometime in October. As to, there are some members of the Charter Commission who are arguing that the Town Charter supersedes Section 164. So Town Council has been asked to look at that issue and make some sort of ruling. I did ask the Department if the Redding Town Council wishes to, you know, can ask questions of Ruben Rudman, that they would be, that, you know, the Department would make Ruben Rudman available for this. And so that's where it's at, at this point. I don't know where this is going to go. There are some supporters, there are some detractors on the Committee at this point. So I don't know whether the changes that are in the Charter will take place or not. And some we'll have to look at going forward, and if changes don't get made, I don't know what our next step would be at that point.
Further discussion on that?
Just progress report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then let's move on to approving the Board Minutes from the March 27th meeting. I believe I was the secretary and made a few tweaks, and if those were implemented, then I'm fine with them. These were one of our lengthy minutes, hopefully we're trying to get away from.
Yeah.
A book, it's a riveting reading, too.
Yes, and riveting writing, too, I'm sure. I'll move that the Minutes of the March 27th, 2014, get accepted as presented.
Okay.
Question, not having been on the Board.
You're allowed to vote, apparently, I'm told, my G.
Yeah.
All in favor? Motion carries three oh.
Let me just hold on me, dear.
Exactly, I know. There has to be, there has to be something wrong in the Minutes. Okay, General Managers' Report.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. The first topic is, next week is National Public Power Week. It's the week where the nation recognizes the benefits of public power, and I'd like to invite everyone to our open house on Thursday, October 9th, between 2:00 and 5:00. It's held in the garage. And it was quite a success last year. You can meet Bolter, there's going to be a number of technology displays and construction displays, and we invite everyone, all ages, to come on down. So that's 2:00 to 5:00 on October 9th.
Great. Great.
In accordance with, may I go to the next topic? In accordance with the revised Policy Number Two on Surplus Material, I need to report on surplus materials. At this time, we are seeking fair market value for the disposal of three surplus vehicles, the three trucks that were brought back to RMLD, two Station One Transformers from the old Station One next door, and scrap wire, both aluminum and copper. We're in the process of seeking fair market values on those, as of the policy process.
What is the, so what will you be doing to, maybe we could explain to the public what that consists of?
Well, in seeking fair market value for bucket trucks is, can be quite subjective. We have, seeking a number of companies that sell the trucks, that we could get trade-ins. There are not a lot of private companies that will come out and do it for free, so you have to, in accordance with the policy, offset that price with what the truck might be worth. So we're in the process of doing that now. The policy calls for a minimum of two, or at least two fair market values. And then we're starting the process from scratch with the new policy, which means it will then be put on the website for 30 days, it will go into publications, trade publications, it'll be offered to each of the towns at the fair market value, and then most likely, because it would be considered moderate value, which is less than, which is above $500 but less than $10,000, it will probably go to public auction, and then carried on the public auction websites as well.
Thank you.
If, as far as the Transformers are concerned, the old Station One Transformers are about 40,000 pounds minus 10,000 pounds of oil. The station is retired, the Transformers are most likely just scrap metal, so we have to get market prices on scrap metal for those Transformers. And typically what we would do is have the people who bid on that be responsible for taking the oil out of the drums. So we're seeking prices on those. And then your scrap wire, we have scrap wire bins that are both aluminum and copper, and then you would get prices for, who is trading at the highest for that day, when the bins get full.
Thank you. Does that conclude your report?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thanks. That, I think, brings us to the Power Supply Report. Jane Perito.
Here to report on the July Purchase Power Summary. This is the first item on the agenda. RMLD's load for June came in at 61.5 million kilowatt hours, and that's about a 5% decrease when we compare that to June of 2013. Our energy costs for the month came in at $2.5 million, and that's equivalent to a little over 4 cents per kilowatt hour. The June fuel charge adjustment was set at 6.5 cents per kilowatt hour, and RMLD's sales totaled 55.2 million kilowatt hours. Prior to the fiscal year adjustment, RMLD over-collected by approximately $1 million. And following the fiscal year-end adjustment of approximately $800,000, the deferred fuel cash reserve balance is currently at $4.1 million. The fuel charge was reduced in July, August and October, and the current October fuel charge is set at 4.5 cents. charge is set at four and a half cents. The deferred fuel cash reserve is slightly higher than what, where it typically is, however, given the upcoming winter period and last year's experience with natural gas constraints and the exposure on the fuel market, it's anticipated that that will be going down during the November through February timeframe. RMLD purchased nineteen percent of our energy requirement from the ISO spot market at an average cost of forty-four dollars per megawatt hour. On the capacity side, our peak demand for June occurred on June twenty-fifth at four o'clock, and it was a hundred and forty-three megawatts, this compares to a peak of a hundred and sixty-two megawatts a year ago. Our, our monthly requirement for capacity was set at two hundred and eight megawatts, and our total capacity dollars for the month of June came in at one point four three million dollars, and that's equivalent to a little less than seven dollars per kilowatt month. Table four shows both the capacity and energy costs, as well as the amount of energy generated by resource. Our June cost for capacity and energy came in at about six and a half cents, and for the month of June, six point four three percent of our energy was purchased from hydro generation. If we look at table five, those list the four hydro projects where RMLD receives renewable energy certificates per the PPA that was signed. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, RMLD has a little over, a little less than ninety-nine hundred recs, and the current estimated market value of that is about four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Table six looks at transmission, RMLD's cost for transmission for the month of June came in at about eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, and that's a thirty-one percent increase when we compare that to May's figure. The final two tables in the report are the energy efficiency tables. For the month of June, RMLD processed four commercial rebates totaling just a little over seventeen thousand dollars, and that brought the fiscal year fourteen total to two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. RMLD calculates the savings of approximately nine hundred and seventy-six kilowatts of capacity, and a little over twenty-six hundred megawatt hours in energy savings. On the residential side, we calculate a savings of about two hundred and fifty-seven kilowatts in capacity, and a hundred and twenty-three megawatt hours of energy savings. For the fiscal year ending for, June fourteenth, RMLD processed one thousand two hundred and fifteen residential rebates totaling a little over seventy-seven thousand dollars, and we also, three hundred and sixty-three residential customers received audits from the RMLD, and that cost us a little over seventy-two thousand dollars. That's the report for June.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
On the recs, how does that number compare to last year's, previous years?
The market's been pretty sta, static, they're coming in around fifty-two dollars, each class of rec has a different market, we, the, the projects that we have entitlements in qualify for both Connecticut and Rhode Island primarily, and there's some Massachusetts one recs, but that rec market has been pretty stable over the last two years.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I have, I just have a question about the rebate programs, because there was the study that the planning, what are they called again, the?
M A P C.
M A P C, yeah, they did something, and they had some suggestions, and then we have another study that we're looking at tonight, are we, are we comfortable with how these are working and the cost benefit of these?
We'd love to, I, I'm short-staffed in my department, the, the position that really manages those, we're looking to fill that position, so unfortunately, we don't have the manpower currently to-
Right.
-to really fine-tune it, so we're working with what we have with the hopes of adding new programs and making modifications.
Yeah, as I recall, just as a homeowner who's used them in the past, that some of these are tied to certain efficiency of the A C.
Correct.
And whether that's become outdated because-
No, no, it's still, we, we, we benchmark these against programs that the IOUs have,
okay.
And so our standards are high.
Okay.
You know, obviously, it needs to be tweaked, and it's just a matter of getting some manpower in to, to enable us to do that.
Okay, but so, in the meantime, we're, we're mirroring what the, like, NSTAR does.
Correct, correct.
So if they're, if they're tweaking what they do, we tweak ours in response to that?
Not as quickly as we could, and again, it's just, we need bodies to be able to do that, we can outsource that, we're outsourcing currently assistance with our commercial audits.
Okay.
And so it's just a manage, we're managing that.
I guess I wonder if it's worth just a, a quick look, and then at our next meeting, to see if these are indeed aligned with what NSTAR is doing?
Yep.
And, and, you know, we, we could take action potentially on something, free, I'm making this up, but let's say there's, we're giving away money for ACs that everybody's buying anyway, because they don't make the low C or ones anymore, that, that, something like that we could fix potentially, if there was something like that that you found.
Yep, I'd be happy to report back on that.
Thank you.
Tying into that-
Yep.
-we've developed an electric charging program, I think we have just one slide on The current application is on the RMLD website, we have developed a, a rebate of up to fifty percent of the cost of the charger, as well as the cost of installation, and that's capped at fifteen hundred dollars because of the fact that it addresses both residential and commercial. The typical, we've done two of these, two customers in Redding own electric vehicles, and we, they've filled out the application, we've gone out to visit them, we've, we took somebody from engineering, and we've looked at the charging station, and we continue to monitor their usage. One of the customers, as, one of the benefits of having a charging station is they charge at night, so those two customers are on the time of use rate, our, our off-peak rate is considerably less than our on-peak rate, and one customer, he uses almost ninety percent of his power off-peak, with the, with the addition of, he's on the electric water heater, as well as having the electric vehicle, so it's, there's some very advantageous programs here for this.
What is the, so what does a charger cost typically, did you say?
The, the two, the two that we've rebated, they're in the five to seven hundred dollar range, and then the installation, usually you have to pull a permit and get an electrician to come, that could be, you know, a couple of hundred dollars, so the two, the two prices that we've received have been in the six to eight hundred dollar range for the completely installed charger, and the RMLD rebated fifty percent of that. So it has to be a level two charging station, what that means is that it's at two hundred and forty volts, this is, this program is for both residential and commercials for plug-in vehicles. As I mentioned, typically, the, the commercial ones are much more expensive than the residential ones, we're working with a, a customer in, in Wilmington, and each situation could be different. I know some of the ninety-nines have charging stations, and they market that as a value-added service, so that becomes part of their electrical service that they have. There's other applications where, if they were in a public place, the RMLD would own that charging station, and so we're working with a commercial customer where we're actually owning the charging station, and they're allowing their employees to charge while they're working. Teresa Shakespeare, who works in my group, was working with the Mass DEP, and she was successful in obtaining a ninety-eight hundred dollar grant towards the cost of those charging stations, and so those are scheduled to be, all the applica, all the agreements have been signed, and those are, should be in, installed by the end of the year.
What would a, for a homeowner vehicle, how long would the charging process take?
Usually, it depends on the size of the battery, but typically, it, it takes anywhere between five and eight hours to get a full charge, and just the way people are going to be using these things, it's going to be very different than a gas vehicle, where, you know, you charge it on the way to work, or on the way home, or while you're shopping. These vehicles, you're really charging them at night, and you're just topping them off during the day, so it wouldn't cost, unless you have a very far distance to travel, or it's winter time and you're running your heater, which is draining your battery additionally, you're typically going to be just top, topping off your battery, whether you're shopping or at work, or-
The ninety-nine example, you're going to dinner and charging all you have-
While you're, while you're eating dinner, exactly.
Chair, question, you said public buildings, which is, you know, something key for us, I would think, in Wilmington, a lot of our public buildings would be, so the RMLD would own them?
It, we would work with you, it's really, there's various options, some customers want to own them, and they want to provide this free, if the, the particular application was one where you wanted to charge the customer for using it, then most likely, RMLD would own it, and then we, it would be a pay-as-you-go situation, where as customers came up, they would swipe and they'd have to-
Because I'm thinking along the lines of schools, you know, especially with our new high school being built, we'd want to promote that.
Yep.
Some of our other facilities, town hall, public safety, you know, as people-
Sure, we'd love to meet with you and your group to decide, you know, what the appropriate application is. The, the grant at the DEP, it's a first-come, first-served, so I'm not sure how much monies are left over, but we'd be happy to work with any of our customers in that regard.
I'm sure, because we could help install, so, in my department.
Correct.
Okay.
How about here at the RMLD campus, having a couple of chargers out, run your credit card, sell some electricity?
It's probably part of the master plan that's kind of been, you know, again, there's all different applications, and it's something that we're very excited about and looking to work with customers.
So, yeah, so this is the future, I think, I'm really going to see, we got Tesla building a five billion dollar battery factory in Nevada, it's going to be the biggest battery factory in the world, they're coming out with a mass-market car.
They just have been approved in Massachusetts to sell, so-
Exactly, and they're, right, and so then the, the Model S is like a seventy thousand dollar car, the one they sell now, but the next one's going to be kind of, you know, you, you or I could afford it, or at least I could afford it.
Along with Tom, what Tom was asking, I mean, comparison on the car, the Tesla compared to an Nissan Leaf, charging time, I mean, there's a big difference.
Is there?
Oh, yeah, it's huge.
It's based on the battery size, and the test has a very large battery.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, the Leaf's eighty, about an eighty mile range, and, yeah, as Jane said, about a five to eight.
Like two-ten, I think.
Is that, is it?
Yeah.
So, well, that's very exciting, thank you very much, was that, was that?
And then I have one other item, it's the wholesale power supply, and that's the last item on my agenda. Staff, I put together a memo, basically, to Colleen, and, which is included in the board books, RMLD has been utilizing a laddering and layering approach over the last seven years in term, in terms of looking out for four years and procuring a portion of each of those four years in power supply. It's, it's, it's worked very well, it's allowed us to take advantage of some significantly low costs, and it's one of those things where you're never going to hit the market perfectly, but you're picking up a piece in order to stabilize your prices. So if I wanted to just step you through this contract timeline to just give you a, a sense of how this is accomplished, if you look at the, the different colored eight and a half by fourteen sheet here, the lines labeled one is the on-peak and off-peak kilowatts for each month that have been procured in previous RFPs, and so what that means is, over the last three years, in twenty eleven, twelve, and thirteen, we picked up a portion of those, of, of each of those amounts for each month going out in those four years. There was nothing procured in twenty eighteen because every year, we're adding a new year. The next lines two is the RFP on-peak KW, so the lines in green is the maximum amount of quantities that RMLD will be looking to purchase in this upcoming RFP, wholesale RFP, excuse me. Line three is what we'd be looking at in the future, and that's assuming our portfolio changes, if we were to invest in any type of renewable generation or fossil fuel generation, that would be incorporated in that line, and the, the last two lines are four, which is our total requirement. That's based on our current portfolio, and that also assumes that we have a portion of our power supply on the spot market. Using that, we're able to take advantage of some low prices, particularly during the off-peak periods, and that has been beneficial to our overall wholesale power supply costs. This was presented to the Citizens Advisory Board at their meeting on August thirteenth, two of their members were absent, but based on the presentation, it was unanimously voted three to nothing for us to move forward with this procurement. The total, the maximum amount of energy over the four-year period would be approximately four hundred and sixty-three thousand megawatt hours. As of August thirteenth, when this memo was drafted, the average cost was approximately fifty-six dollars per megawatt hour, and that equated to around twenty-six million dollars.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Excuse me, Ms. Chair?
Yep, sure.
Jane, a question, can I talk to you about photovoltaic panels?
Mm-hmm.
Solar power for the, for the town, for the county?
Correct.
We're looking to, especially on some of our schools, we have the square footage, the open area, I think that would be perfect facing the southerly sky.
Yep.
I, I know that the RMLD would be interested in some generation, so I think the town has a, a perfect location.
Okay.
On some of our school building, just because we have the acreage.
Yep.
To put it up on there, we've just done some new roofs out there, so it's kind of a great application.
Structural would be, yes, sound.
Structural is sound, so.
Yeah, we'd like to, I'd love to sit down and meet with you and members of the town, and we can go over-
I know a lot of the Board of Selectmen have shown some interest in this, and this is something that we've been working towards, I mean, we have capital projects in place, so with you guys creating a generation-
Yep.
-we have the application, so.
That is music to everybody's ears, I think, thank you very much for, for bringing that up. What is the town of Redding, or the town of Redding School System doing via, vis-à-vis PV, anything, or?
I know, I know at one point, they were working with the M A P C in terms of, they had gone out for a state bid, and the, the vendor that they had originally awarded that to defaulted, and so they had to start the process over, and myself and Jesse Wilson from the town attended a few of those meetings, and I could touch base with Jesse to see where they're at, but-
But, but what was the project going to be?
Well, they were looking at various buildings within the town of Redding to see what would be applicable.
Okay.
You know, it has to be structurally sound in order to support the, it has to be southerly facing.
Right.
And I think, it's been a while since, I, I don't want to speak, you know, I'm not sure.
Was this town, or town and schools, or schools?
This was the town and schools.
It was both.
Correct.
So the person you were dealing with was representing both sides?
There were, there were, yeah, we met with Jesse Wilson from the planning department, Mary Delive was at the school committee at that point.
But she's not with the town anymore?
No, so it-
Without town now.
Yeah, she's great, she's really good, you know, she did the whole efficiency push.
Right.
So, so that, as far as you know, there's no action now on the town side to get any of these projects going?
I'm not sure, yeah, I, I really can't speak to that.
I mean, and George, you should take a look at the Lincoln Sudbury, and if you shoot me an email, I'll send it to you, they're doing-
That was one of the things, actually, when you mentioned that we were looking at for our new high school.
Uh-huh.
It didn't really work into our plan, I guess, at this time.
Okay, but it doesn't have to, because, like, they have a existing high school, they got a big parking lot.
Right, the canopy.
They just, just canopies, I mean.
Exactly.
And big savings.
Looking at, especially our older schools that don't have the mechanical, the air handlers in units on top of the roof, that's why I said the acreage up on top of some of our other schools is perfect.
But you're looking at roofs and not parking lots?
Well, parking lots can be something we could address also, but like I said, with these buildings right now, or currently, I mean, up on these roofs, we have that open space.
Right.
Yeah, the carports tend to be about thirty percent more expensive than roofs.
Oh, I didn't know that, I didn't know that.
So usually, the roof's the first place to look at.
Again, not having the, the equipment up on the roofs, having the acreage right there, knowing the roofs are in great shape, fairly new.
Right.
Yeah, that's great.
It's prime for us.
You're going to save, you'll save a lot of money, and, so that's great. Anything else?
I think there's a motion.
Oh, sorry.
Whenever you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm ready, please, go ahead.
That the RMLD Board of Commissioners authorized the General Manager to execute one or more power supply agreements in accordance with RMLD's wholesale power supply plan for power supply purchase for a period not to exceed fifteen, two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and eighteen, in amounts not to exceed twenty-nine megawatts in two thousand and fifteen, twenty-seven megawatts in two thousand and sixteen, twenty-four megawatts in two thousand and seventeen, and twenty-three megawatts in two thousand and eighteen, presented by the- presented by the Director of Integrated Resources and on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board and the General Manager.
Do we have a second? And all in favor? Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Jane. Uh, Hamid Jafari has his energy, engineering and operations report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. It's right, I'm gonna be reporting for the month of June. The first page on tab D is a financial. Uh, you see on project number three, eleven, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-three with asterisks right next to them. These are the ones that they completed. Uh, the total budget, the annual budget, uh, was six million, uh, three point nine million approximately, you know, year-to-date with spend. And the remaining balance would be two point two million. The next page, the capital improvements, we got projects one oh one, one oh six, and one oh seven complete, yeah, and, well, they're in process of, in progress, the constructions. Uh, projects one oh one is five W nine reconducting Ballard Vale area, which is fifty percent completed. Uh, there's some number of U R Ds in the all towns that are completed, uh, to date, and they're worth five thousand six hundred thirteen dollars. Those are Heritage Way in North Reading, uh, Wildwood Street in North Reading, and Summit Ave in Reading. Uh, projects one oh seven, step-down areas, upgrade in, uh, in Reading, uh, area, the Bond Street and Vine Street and Hunt Street. These are all, uh, completed. And that the next, uh, item, the new customer services connections, we've had a number of service installations in commercial and residential areas. If you go back to page one, you see them under the item twelve and thirteen, uh, which we've spent ten thousand forty-seven dollars on residential customers in new installations and two hundred thirty-three dollars for the commercial. The next page, and the routine construction, the capital improvements. Year-to-date, on month of June, we've spent seventy-four thousand five hundred twenty-eight, and year-to-date fiscal is one million six hundred eighty-one thousand seven twenty-nine. Uh, the highlights of those are for pole settings and transfers, uh, overhead, uh, and underground installations. We've had a number of, uh, projects completed, uh, in all towns, in North Reading High School, Middle School, Drive Way widening, Haverhill Street, North Reading, pole relocation, West Street, uh, we did two services, Saint Agnes Parish in Woburn Street, uh, Reading, and Avalon Oak West in Wilmington. Uh, we've had the four damaged pole that were repaired in all, uh, communities. Uh, we have, uh, we've had porcelain cutout replacement, uh, that we've done, about, uh, we spent two thousand nine dollars on those. Uh, lightening, uh, the storm trouble, underground subdivisions we've had in Wilmington and North Reading. McGrane Road subdivision was completed as a new construction, uh, in new underground subdivision. Amherst Road in Wilmington, the three new lots. Uh, Duane Drive in, uh, North Reading was completed also, and we installed some animal guard. Uh, and the, the next, uh, item, the preventative maintenance program. We've, uh, completed a number of projects. Aged overloaded transformer replacement, and those we've replaced four transformers, two, uh, single-phase pad mount transformers and two three-phase pad mount transformers. Uh, and the, the single-phase pad mount transformers, uh, we've replaced in Wildwood Street, North Reading, and Heritage Way, North Reading. And the three-phase transformers, they were replaced in Ballard Vale Avenue and West Research Drive in Wilmington. And the pole testing program system-wide, uh, we have, uh, identified six hundred forty poles, six hundred forty-two, four, six hundred seventy poles approximately that they're gonna be tested. The contract was awarded to M Power Technologies. They're gonna get started in mid-October. And, uh, that's per USDA mandate, that ten percent of the pole, on pole in all, uh, communities, they're gonna have to be tested. And so we're gonna do that, start doing that, uh, in mid-October, and hopefully within two, three weeks, we're gonna get a report that, uh, to say what the status of the, those poles and, uh, it's a very interesting, uh, program and technology. Uh, the manhole, uh, the thirteen eight KV, thirty-five KV feeders, quarterly inspections. We've had a number of those completed, uh, three W eight, three W eighteen, five W four, five W eight, and five W nine feeders. The manhole inspection programs, it's in pain, pending, we still are developing that program to inspect all the manholes in all four communities, uh, for the integrity check and making sure that the cables and all the assets, uh, located underground are, uh, in, in sound, uh, condition. Uh, the porcelain cutout replacements, we've done ten of those, uh, which basically three were changed out as part of the porcelain cutouts replacement program, and additional seven replaced because of the damage. So to date, we've completed approximately eighty-seven percent of those. Uh, uh, under the next, uh, item for preventative maintenance and substations, we have started the infrared scanning, the monthly scanning, uh, for station three, station four, and station five for the month of, uh, June, all the way actually, it's, I'll not complete it till August. We haven't found any hotspots, any particular problems. Although, under the substation maintenance program, the testing of the equipment, as Colleen mentioned earlier, they've got the three years, there's a cyclic maintenance program. Uh, and we've identified some, uh, equipment that we are taking care of, that they're, they need maintenance and they need replacement. And we are taking care of that. Eighty percent of that project to date is completed. We expect the UPG to be done by November, hopefully, and, uh, that would, uh, conclude that mission. Uh, under the system reliability, basically the two indices that we are monitoring, uh, for the health of the system, evaluating the health of the system, the duration and frequency of the outages. They're all under the regional and national average, so all the reliability is good. The system average interruption duration for the past five years have been really good, as you could see on page three. Uh, for the month of June, we had eight point eight two minutes for the system average interruption duration, which is well below sixty-two point three five for the regional average and eighty-five point seven five for national average. Uh, for the system average interruption frequency index, uh, for the same period, you see that it's point two-two, which is again below the, uh, regional average of a point five-five and national average of point eight-three. For customer average interruption duration, you see, but, uh, that we've got thirty-nine point seven seven minutes, which is again well below the national, uh, average of eighty-three and regional average of one oh five point seven seven. The next page, you see the list of the, uh, causes of the outages and types of outages. For two thousand fourteen, year-to-date, the June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. Uh, as you could see, the majority of the outage caused were equipment damage and also the trees and wildlife. And we've identified those equipment that we need to be upgraded. Part, most of these equipments are the porcelain cutouts that we have identified. We know that, you know, well, they're causing, they're problematic, and, uh, they're identified and they're being replaced as an ongoing, uh, program. And for the trees, we have developed, uh, uh, very good tree trimming program. It's a three to five-year cyclic program, uh, the tree trimming, uh, hmm, eh, we met with all the communities, the DPW directors and town wardens, as well as, uh, some town managers and administrators that have been notified with the new tree trimming program. And we're gonna be sending notifications to the town administrators and managers with a package regarding the tree trimming program that we have developed to address these, uh, outages that they're caused by, uh, trees and tree hazardous trees. That concludes my report for the month of June. Any questions from the board? I can't go to the next item.
Please do.
You had a question?
I don't, no.
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I guess I have one item that needs to be voted for the bid that was, uh, should I go, continue calling? Okay, so, uh, on July ninth, two thousand fourteen, a bid invitation was placed as a legal notice in the Middlesex East section of the Daily Times Chronicle and the Central Register requesting proposal for the Linfield U R D excavation project for FY two thousand fifteen for Reading Municipal Light. As in, in the invitation to bid was emailed to about thirty-four, uh, construction companies. Uh, bids were received from Tim Zanelli Excavating LLC, Ventresca, Matuccio, and ERA Equipment. And no bid was received by email from Vitiglio Constructions. The bids were publicly op, opened and read aloud at eleven AM on August sixth, two thousand fourteen in the Town of Reading Municipal Light Department Boardroom, located at two thirty Asher Street, Reading, Massachusetts. And, uh, the bids were reviewed, analyzed, and evaluated by the interim general ma, manager, uh, and, uh, the staff. Uh, so I respect, respectfully, hmm, make a request to, uh, to make the move, uh, that the bid two thousand fifteen dash one for the Linfield U R D excavation project, two thousand fifteen be awarded to Tim Zanelli Excavation for two hundred seventeen thousand three hundred. Uh, so, I think that, that day Colleen wasn't here, I guess, uh, Jane was. Is that, Jane, you were here for the open, bid opening? That was the mistake, that was the, that was the, I make a correction, I apologize. That should be the general manager and the staff, not the interim, there was no interim. I thought you were covering for Colleen, huh, that day. Okay, so that's a mistake, I apologize. So I respectfully make a request to vote on this, so we can proceed with it.
Motion. Yeah. Moved that bid two thousand fifteen dash one for Linfield U R D excavation project two, uh, two thousand fifteen be awarded to Zim, Tim Zanelli, hopefully I pronounced that right, Excavation LLC for two hundred seventeen thousand three hundred dollars as the lowest qualified bid in the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second? Question, why was the other bids so much higher? Cause they look like almost double in many of those other bids that we've got.
They all receive the same, uh, specifications, so it could be, I guess, the timing, some contractors, you know, they got so much jobs that.
They just put a high bid out there.
High bid out there just through, to, through their, you know.
We bid, uh, we bid on some, sometimes it's, uh, some people own their equipment, others may not, you know, so that reflects a lot of that also.
Um, okay, um, I guess we're ready for the vote. All in favor? Motion carries three, oh. Uh, this, this actually makes me, reminds me of something that I wanted to ask. When we do excavation, do we coordinate with, uh, the respective towns, um, say, while we have the street up that happens? And also when we do that, do we, do we put con, like conduit in in key places for future stringing of, say, fiber or anything? Like, just adding a conduit doesn't really add any cost, but if you ever needed to throw, um, fiber through there or something else, you could, you could pull it.
To me, that would be a question for you.
You don't know?
Did you have to notify for, uh, street openings so we can coordinate any type of underground work?
Yes, they do. Uh, they sent me an email, they sent me and, uh, chief engineer email.
And is it, is it standard practice to just put some con, you know, four-inch conduit down there for a future pulling wire or pulling fiber? Should it be needed?
Naturally, depending on which area, you know.
Sure.
It is, if it's underground area we make, we try to make it. And if it's not, you know, uh, then.
I mean, certainly if it's on a cul-de-sac, you wouldn't do it, but I mean, if it's on a busy street and you're in there. Um, I mean, it's, it's, I'm told it's good practice to put the empty conduit in there just in case it's needed. It doesn't really add anything to the cost.
It's very costly if you wanna get, do, do, do that. Be waiting for the organizational and reliability study to tell us exactly where we need to extend the feeders.
Right.
So as part of that plan, if, you know, moving forward, if that's within the plan and it's calling for it, we can, you know, do that.
Right.
Otherwise, the cost of the construction is gonna go up.
But, I mean, sure, I mean, it, common sense can apply as well. If you, if you happen to be opening up Main Street, uh, Route twenty-eight from Calarusso's to the, to the school system.
Right.
You know, you'd add, it would make sense to add a piece of conduit for future stringing of fiber or wire if you had a chance. Just throwing it out there. It's said to be good practice, um, for future needs, so.
Sure.
Um, we're appropriate. Well, thank you. Is that, is that all?
That's all. I don't have anything else except, uh, Colleen, you wanna go to organizational study?
Uh, on Monday, April fourteenth, uh, two thousand fourteen, an RFP request for proposal notice was published in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Good Services Bulletin. And on Wednesday, April sixteenth, the request for proposal was published as a legal notice in the Daily Times Chronicle, Middlesex East section to conduct two comprehensive and integrated studies for the Reading Municipal Light Department, organizational study and electrical reliability study. Uh, the RFPs were sent to sixteen firms as well. They, there was a, the RFP review committee consisted of myself and Hamid Jafari, the Director of Engineering and Operations. The committee performed a formal RFP review of qualifications of all four proposals received, which was from E S C, Booth and Associates, Loomis, and Leidos. Um, the committee reviewed, analyzed, and evaluated the proposals using comparative criteria, developed a composite rating for each of the firms. The firms with the most advantageous proposals based on the ratings and pricing were Leidos to perform the organizational study and Booth and Associates to perform the electrical system study. Hamid's gonna go over right now quickly, uh, the, the points of scope for, uh, the organizational study and the reliability study.
Yeah, and the, uh, organizational study highlights, we basically, uh, assessing the current, uh, organizational, physical, and operational structure. And then they're gonna perform a gap analysis in order to make recommendations for the organization of our size and where the future of the industry lies and what the requirements are. Uh, we, they're gonna do the, evaluate the engineering operations and safety practices and, uh, gonna identify deficiencies that we might have in those areas. They're gonna evaluate energy efficiency programs and making recommendations for demand site management, distribution generations, and where we can, you know, bring more savings for, uh, RMLD. Uh, they're gonna provide an efficient business model to be best utilized, uh, with the RMLDs, to best utilize RMLDs fiber loop, and that's another area that, uh, I know Mr. Talbot is, has high interest on. It's, uh, uh, develop strategies for risk, uh, management and major emergency plan of operations and also, uh, career development and succession planning, uh, to make sure we meet the future requirements and our, uh, staff, they have the skills necessary in order to, uh, reach that, to get them. So that would be for the organizational study. The next slide, please. The highlighted reliability study is they, we, we would like to develop a short-range and long-range system planning, evaluate the substation capacity, feeder capacity, and minimizing the losses. Uh, we also would like to provide energy efficiency DSM, the den and peak shaving programs, recommendations in order to, um, uh, do more savings for the ratepayers. Uh, provide a roadmap to improve and sustain reliability, provide assess management recommendations, asset management recommendations, and these, the, and also perform comprehensive system protection coordination evaluation. This is very important for, uh, the reliability, hmm, to make sure all the protective devices on the feeders, they trip out in the sequence in case there is a fault. And, uh, we're gonna develop a smart grid roadmap. Uh, as of now, we have partially developed the ma, the roadmap. However, we need to make sure depending on the outcome of the study, that's gonna finalize which direction we need to go and how many remote switches we're gonna have. which direction we need to go and how many remote switches we're going to have, that it's going to be operated from the skater and how it's going to tie into with the technology that we're going to employ to meet the future goals and also minimize the duration and the frequency of the outages, so to improve the reliability, in other words. We're also going to perform the G I S gap analysis and make recommendations. As you're aware, our G I S data hasn't been maintained for quite a few years. We need to bring that model up to date. Once the model is updated, that's going to be pushed out into engineering model Millsoft for analysis and also for engineering analysis and making future recommendations for the construction as far as addressing the capacity for the feeder and the substation concerns. And also, that's also going to be pushed out to outage management system for to be able to identify the outages and restore the outages in another package called Fault Detection, Isolation, Restoration, which is all under the umbrella of the Distribution Management System Package that's operated from the real-time system skater. And skater, in other words, is going to be managing all the distribution feeders, activities, monitors, outages, and making decisions in the future, how to route, reroute the circuits in order to minimize the losses and also restoring the outages in the expeditious manner. So all of these good plans are coming, hopefully after we do the gap analyses, we know where the future lies and which direction we should be making the investments, basically.
Thank you, Hameed. So based on the evaluation process in accordance with the memorandum from myself to the R M L D Board of Commissioners dated September fifteenth in two thousand fourteen, and based on the evaluation process, it's in the best interest of R M L D to award the organizational study to Leidos and the system reliability study to Booth and Associates. Both firms are considered qualified in developing comprehensive and organizational reliability studies. However, Booth and Associates presented a more structured format with a better understanding and ability to execute reliability scope at the level commensurate with R M L D's intent.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, there's some estimates out there that there'll be something twenty to thirty percent PV on grids in the next thirty to forty years. And it's going to happen whether we want it to, or we want it to happen. So will this give us a grid that can support twenty to thirty percent PV? I mean, is that something that these organizations are looking at, that that's the future and that we'll have the engineering and the organization necessary to both be in that business?
That definitely is going to provide the roadmap, yes. As far as the system capacity wise concerning, yes, we do have. Even now, we could add those, so it won't be a problem. What this study is going to provide us, basically, where we should make the investments as far as the capacity concerns, what the substation capacity should be. We know we need probably a new substation where the load is concentrated in Wilmington area. And we know the areas that we've identified, the areas that the load centers are in other communities as well, too. So this study, basically, is going to give us the roadmap where we should make the most investments and where we need to beef up the capacity for future needs. All the new energy, I mean, the energy resources, the renewable energy resources is going to do, basically, it's going to help to support that structure.
So that's from an engineering point of view?
Yes.
But what about from a business point of view, that R M L D could be in the actual business of, say, putting up a photovoltaic generation station in Wilmington, for example? Like, will that help us define how we would go into that business?
Actually, we had a meeting this morning with a tangent, and that was discussed. Yeah, there are opportunities that, you know, at the substations, we could install distributed generations.
Right.
We are reviewing and we're studying those options, the viability of those options, and how practical it would be. Also, in some instances, it makes sense, you know, if we cooperate with the customers so they can install distributed generation on their properties. And, you know, they could...
That we would own or that they would own?
That is the both ways. It has pros and cons for each. That's something that needs to be studied. I guess Jane can elaborate more on that. Do you want to add anything, Jane?
No, we're looking at those, and it becomes part of the strategic plan of the organization, how those things fit financially and that piece of it. So I believe the strategic plan, along with the organizational study, the reliability study, all pulls it together.
Right, right. Because you guys know what's coming. I mean, very sharp technology adoption, I think, is on the way, both with cars, electric cars, and with PV, at least from what I'm reading. It's not something I'm making up. It's... Costs are going way down, and these are going to be big.
The study will look at the projected load growths, but they'll also look at the impact of PV.
Right.
They'll look at the business opportunity of which ones will have, you know, partnerships in and look at the capacity that's already existing versus what we might need or areas where we might not need to improve because the PV will offset it.
Right.
I mean, they're supposed to look at all of those things as you go into twenty years, but there'll be projections as well that'll give you, you know, the best indication of where we need to focus our capital improvements over twenty years.
That's great.
I just had a question for you, Hameed and Colleen. So, the bids that we have, are they... Because I definitely support both of these studies, but just curious, were these bids mid-range? Because we talked in the previous motion, we know the lowest is quite a differential. So are these... How do these bids compare to the rest of the mid-range or...
Actually, they... It's attached in your last tab.
Breakfast.
Excuse me, tab E.
Ready for the motion to be borne, Mr. Chairman?
And I guess the other question, more just process, so these kinds of studies, so if it's... How does the out of scope work get managed? So, I assume this is a fixed bid, so it's not billable hours, but approximately the work is provided for the amount approved.
Right.
But if there's other... Could there maybe other opportunities on succession planning or other things? So is that just handled as a request for additional services if we decide if we even want to do that?
If there's transition projects that come out of this, generally, what they'll do is they'll lay out what the recommendations are in a timeline and prioritize them and then make recommendations of what would be the most cost beneficial.
Yep.
And then we would proceed from there with the types of projects that we want to undertake. But there'll be some that are being immediate, that won't be costly, like process improvements or, you know, internal business improvements. And then there'll be others that, you know, be more like capital projects. You know, we're looking at the skill sets and the career development of staff to make sure that we're properly staffed and we have the right skill sets for not only now but for the future. Because as you go into the future, the technology's going to change, and you want to make sure that you keep your staff skilled to be commensurate with the system that you're operating. The flexibility of the system that we will get out of this as well will also demonstrate to speak to our ability to manage our peak, because the more flexible that we can control the system, the better off we will be. Efficiency wise, meaning the system efficiency and the flexibility to be able to almost load profile, especially if we, you know, if we have... If we develop other types of rates in the future.
When do these contractors get paid? And do we have the ability, when we get drafts in, to ask them follow-up questions and have them maybe study another... Go another level on something that we weren't satisfied with the answer they gave us or...
Of course. Well, the first thing that's going to happen is a kickoff meeting where they'll come in and give an actual presentation to the Board of Commissioners and explain what their approach is and what they're going to be looking at, what they're going to do in their timeline. And then they'll come back and they'll do a presentation of their findings and their recommendations. And, you know, certainly, they'll be meeting with staff as well, but if at any time we don't feel like they've met the level of scope, I mean, I think we'll be identifying that along the way. I mean, the way that Hameed and I looked at these evaluations was that, you know, certain companies will be do a twenty thousand foot evaluation, and we wanted a little bit more detail so that we were really able to capture, you know, specifics so that we could...
For sure, yeah. I mean, that's what I mean, is that it's possible to write a report that sounds good but doesn't really give you that much meat in there, and you want better answers. Will we, as the board, have the ability to say, "Look, we need another cut at this"?
Well, the level that we're getting here is typical of organizational studies and reliability studies that will be able to give us the detail between one and five years and then ten years and then twenty years. And the recommended changes. Without getting into specifics of what detail you might want to go...
And what's the moment when they... When it's... We're satisfied with what they've given us and they get paid? When is that moment? Is that tonight? They get paid in advance? They get paid when they deliver? They get paid when they deliver and you're happy with it? I'm just curious how these things work.
I think they're created milestones.
The milestones that they reach.
And what's the last one?
Phases. The last one is when they give us the report.
And then you get their last check and they're done?
Yeah. They're supposed to give us a presentation, presentation to the management and the staff as well as to the board.
I mean, it sure would be nice to get the presentation of their findings, but there's still... We need to be feeling like we got what we paid for, that... And there's that last payment doesn't come until we have had that presentation and we feel like we've gotten what we paid for.
Absolutely. That's generally how RFPs work.
I just would... I would like to have it be working that way, that they come and they haven't already gotten their final payment before. We've heard what they had to say, we've read their report, and we're satisfied. Does that make sense?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
That's generally how RFPs work.
Okay. Are there any further questions?
They need our recommendation for the next job, so that's how we check their... You know, definitely.
Okay.
We check their references, and they like to have us as a good reference, so I'm sure they're going to do a good job.
Are we ready for a vote?
Ready for the motion?
I'm ready for the motion.
Okay. Move that the R M L D Board of Commissioners accept Leidos, I guess I spelled... I pronounced that right, to perform the organizational study at a cost of ninety-nine thousand dollars, and Booth and Associates to perform the electrical systems reliability study at a cost of one hundred and sixty-one thousand oh ninety dollars for the R M L D, based on the recommendation of the general manager, for a total cost of two hundred and sixty thousand oh nine oh.
All in favor?
A second. Take a second.
Oh, sorry. Second?
Tom second.
Second from... All in favor? The motion carries three to zero. Yeah, that is very exciting stuff. Is there anything else? Any further discussion?
Nope.
No? Okay, so our next meeting is going to be, did we say the twelfth instead of... Okay. Sure. Okay, so our next meeting will be on Wednesday, November twelfth at seven thirty PM? Okay.
We're making a presentation at town meeting?
I think so.
Are you making a presentation, Mr. Chairman?
I think Colleen will, and I might want to say a few words as well, I mean, if they let us.
Do we want to present my flip chart at that meeting?
Your flip chart.
The flip chart, the financial structure of the department. We talked about that at one point.
You could... Why don't... We could take that... Do we have to discuss that and decide that now?
No. We have until November.
Right. Yeah. We do.
Right.
I will say, but just on this town meeting thing, I think what's important is that town meeting knows what the R M L D is doing and how transformational many of the things we're working on really are, and that that gets communicated to them, because I don't think most people really understand what a utility is, what the challenges are, what these... Why these things are important, from LEDs to charging stations to smart grid to PV. This stuff is really important, and it's exciting, and I think the presentations need to explain these things to them, because I don't think they understand. They hear about... You know what they hear about. So, whether it's Colleen or me or both of us, that's what the presentations need to be focusing on, so that they understand. So, in the flip chart, do they not... I don't know.
Well, I don't think that there's an understanding of just how the financial structure of the department is here.
Okay.
I don't really feel that that's, you know... You know, town meeting continues to change over.
Right.
You know, there aren't any old dogs like me around anymore.
Right.
As many old dogs, you know? But I think...
There's a few of them on town meeting.
Well, I think, you know, my good friend, Mr. Brown, you know, and I think it'd be a good... Maybe a good time to bring that out and actually show the department, you know, how we go from the rates to the bottom line. I mean, it would be only a short presentation I would make if that's...
I don't think it's up to me, really, to decide what it's...
You're the chair.
It's the moderator. Okay, well, let's think about it a bit.
Well, John, we should connect with John. We have full committee. We're talking about the agenda.
Okay. So, Jean, we need to set a meeting for the general manager. Was that what you were getting at?
Yeah.
Do we need to do that now?
Let's have, like, as John's...
Right, right.
Okay, bye.
I can't make a meeting until after April fifteenth, after October fifteenth, so...
Okay, so I think we need a motion to go into executive session then.
Move that the board go into...
Hold on, Jean.
The only thing is, Phil, I put in the forty-seven D exemption with James dual power supply, and we thought we had any discussions that go into strategies, so we don't have to discuss that. That was only as a benchmark to be...
Yeah, I... Okay. Move that the board go into executive session to approve the executive session meeting minutes of March twenty-seventh, two thousand fourteen. Section one sixty-four, section exempt... That's out. Okay? And to discuss mediation and union negotiation update and return to executive session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second motion?
Okay, all in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye?
Okay, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three oh. Thank you, everybody.